All right. By my clock here, it is 6:00 and we will start the Zimmerman City Council Candidate Forum. Today is Monday, October 24th. Good evening and welcome to the Elk River Chamber of Com- Elk River Area Chamber of Commerce Candidate Forum for Zimmerman City Council. My name is Tom Sagstetter and on behalf of the Elk River Area Chamber of Commerce Government Relations Committee, I am your moderator and for tonight's event and thank you all for participating. I'd like to start by thanking the City of Zimmerman for allowing us to use the space and the recording equipment for our forum. And I'd also like to thank the candidates for being here tonight to help us provide important information for voters before they head to the polls. Tonight's event is being recorded and is live and will also be rebroadcast. It is on the livestream from the Zimmerman's- City of Zimmerman's webpage and it will also be on the Zimmerman Cable Channel Number 10. And yeah, I think that's a lot of social media outlets for you. Thank you. The Elk River Area Chamber does not assume any party affiliation nor do we endorse any candidate. We are hosting this forum to provide information about the candidates to the general public. Since this is a public information forum and not a campaign event, we respectfully request that all candidates and audience members refrain from applause or comments that could cause a disruption during the live broadcast forum. I am joined tonight by Brenda Rue who is a member of the Chamber's Government Relations Committee. She will be the timekeeper and will provide you with a signal when you have 30 seconds left to wrap up your thought or your comment. When you see the red signal, that means you have gone over the time limit and you should stop immediately. Each candidate will answer the same questions. We will rotate the order of who answers the question first, second, et cetera. Each candidate will be given two minutes to respond to each question asked. At the end, you will have two minutes to wrap up your thoughts or cover any topics we did not ask you about. We have a very full hour and therefore I will introduce each candidate with the first question. Does anybody have any questions before we get started? All right. Well, thank you. So I'm just gonna, for ease, I'm gonna start on my left and we'll go left to right with the first question and it works out perfect. We have five questions and five people in front of us. So the first question is, introduce yourself and tell us your top priorities and why you are running for this office.
My name is Travis Whisker. I've grown up here in Zimmerman my whole life. The only time I was away is when I served in the Air Force from 2008 to 2013, active duty. I'm running for city council because I want to see more opportunities for our youth in this city. We're a fast-growing community. I've got three kids here in town or they go to school here and I want to see, you know, more opportunities for them guys to want to stay in this community as well. That's my main focus is, you know, making Zimmerman flourish for our youth, going to some of these other cities with sports and everything. Kind of a, we think, well, we should have that there. Why can't we get this or why can't we do that? And it's kind of why I want to get involved with this too and see what we can do with our city parks and our youth here. That's my main focus on that. Yeah, that's all I've got.
Thank you. All right. Harley, do you need me to repeat the question or are you good?
No, I'm comfortable. Yes. Thank you. I'm Harley Wells. I want to thank the Elk River Area Chamber of Commerce for giving us the opportunity to present our priorities and our goals. First off, I'm married to my wife for 55 years. We have two grown daughters, 10 grandchildren, five great-grandchildren, and I've been involved in several community organizations, the Legion. In Spring Lake Park, I was involved for 18 years with Community Celebration. My priorities and part of my reasons for running is, first priority is public safety. I'm very interested in maintaining the excellent fire department that we have, funding it, making sure that they have the apparatus, gear, everything that they need because they are volunteers, they are our neighbors, and I want them well protected. Second, under public safety, I want to make sure that we're providing police department, actually sheriff's department protection, coverage. The community is growing and I want to make sure that we are going along with that. Concerns on the interchange, County 4 and 169, got some concerns and also the annexation of Lagonia and the City of Zimmerman, got some serious concerns on that.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Larry Farber. I'm 65. I'm married. My wife, Mary, she's a local art teacher here. I have three boys and I have stepkids and six grandchildren. I have a four-year degree in criminal justice and public administration. I've been on Elk River City Council 12 years. I've been a county commissioner for four years. I have a, I think I'll just go to my priorities. The priorities would be the County Road 4 and 169 interchange. That was really unfortunate that it was bypassed back in, I think it was 2008. It might be off by a year or two. And we're now sitting here this many years later, hopefully getting it. And I think one of the things we need to do is be persistent, constantly knocking on all the doors and all the people possible to get, to get the money and the funding to get these things done and including the peripheral things like road improvements on County Road 4. I would echo what Mr. Wells said, public safety is an extremely important part, the fire department, which I think is a tremendous fire department. We have a, the council had good foresight in building a new building for them and the police department working with the sheriff on getting public safety. And I would, I would say further, I would like to see maybe neighborhood watches move back into the neighborhoods so that people get to know who, get to know each other. And that's a great prevention for crime. I guess I'll leave it at that.
Are we answering all these at one time or just one at a time?
One at a time.
My name is Dave Erfreuth. I've been here for 52 years. I've been married to my bride for 54 years. I was mayor for 22, then Nick whipped me, so I still like him. And I was on the planning commission for, I still am for 18 years. I was a firefighter for 13. I've been on passing the bread for 16. The goals, I think, are to maintain a prosperous, safe and quality life living in this community, which we have had, and I think that is important to keep that. That's where I'm at on goals.
Okay. Thank you, Dave.
My name is Nick Stay. I'm the current mayor of Zimmerman. I'm running for reelection. My wife and I have been married for about 15 years now. I'm 41 years old. We have two children, Ethan and Carson. Both are heavily involved in sports around the community. I first ran for mayor because I wanted to be involved in the direction that the city was going. Since that time, we have made improvements to the fire district by building a new building, which has significantly increased the safety and the response of the fire department to appropriately staff and respond to the situations that they need. We have been working significantly with the county, the federal government, and the state at the, for County Road 4 improvements, a trail improvement, and 169 over, or interchange for that improvement as well. All of them are going well. We are waiting word on a grant opportunity right now to finalize for 169 for interchange. So the, one good thing about County Road 4, and I know my council member Jay Whiting has been pushing for this for years, is a trail system from County Road 45 down to Westwood. We did get approval from that, from the federal government, on a committee that I'm involved with, with the MINDOT 7W Committee. So our biggest goal is public safety and then public safety as we go to growth phase with the Elk River design piece and redesign Elk River getting done. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So now we'll start with Harley with our second question for tonight. And this one focuses on economic development and incentives. Question is, taxpayers-supported incentives are a popular method used by municipalities to attract new development. What type of projects should be incentivized with local tax dollars in the city of Zimmerman?
Okay, the use of tax increment financing is primary funding and help. The areas that I would see very possibly using tax increment financing and tax rebates would be improving our commerce along County 4. We are currently, I understand, in Zimmerman using tax increment for, for housing apartments. It was used for the depot apartments and I think that's, as we grow, a variety of housing is very important for Zimmerman and depending on the project, tax increment financing could be used in those areas, but you could get in trouble with tax increment financing. It's happened to communities in the past, so, so with using that, I would advise proceeding with caution.
All right. Thank you.
Could you repeat the question again?
Absolutely. Economic development incentives is the topic. Taxpayer-supported incentives are a popular method used by municipalities to attract new development. What types of projects should be incentivized with local tax dollars in the city of Zimmerman?
Well, you've got, you've got two types of financing, tax increment financing, tax rebate. In my experience, when I was on Elk River City Councils, we kept it pretty much to industrial of all sorts because those businesses are taking quite a risk and they need, they need in, I mean, as it goes, all communities are vying for their, their business in their town and that's a great way to do it, but you've got to remember that it's taking away tax base from the schools, the cities, and the county. So you've got to do that with great caution, I do agree. And you need to make sure that you're not doing too, too much of it too often. There have been cities in this, within this 20-mile area that had 38% of their tax base in the tax increment financing. Now, you could bankrupt the city doing that and there have been cities that have done it. So I would just proceed with caution, but I think it's a great tool to attract, particularly industrial uses. I'm not for commercial and if it was housing, I'd have to look at it very carefully, but it's a great tool, but very cautious when you're using it.
Okay. Thank you, Larry. Dave, we are to you, sir.
Can you run that question again?
Absolutely. I would be happy to.
You should have it memorized or pretty soon.
I'm getting there. Taxpayer-supported incentives are a popular method used by municipalities to attract new development. What type of projects should be incentivized with local tax dollars in the city of Zimmerman?
Okay, back in day one, which is in the 70s, which maybe most of you weren't born, we started our sewer and water development with the, with the mindset that you'll only pay once, okay? So we did that and we got it going. That's been the incentive and the philosophy since then. Come to Zimmerman, you pay your fair share. You hook up to the sewer and water, you pay it. You do want to do other things, you pay it. We're not going to take the risk of getting into spending money on bonding for big industrial developments, business buying. We will keep a strong financial foundation for the city. So if you want to come here, we can help in whatever your particular situation is by a strong bonding ability. If we need a project, we can, we can help you out by getting strong, help you with funding because we have a strong and we're not stretched out, so our finances put us in a bad shape. That, the example of that is that, out at the, at the cop shop and UMA and, and the other new business we put out there, it was not an expenditure for industrial development. We worked together with them. They needed help. We were strong and able to help them. So that's the way it should be, not taking taxpayer dollars to put at risk for any of these different developments and whatever. You come here, you want to be here, this is what I need, I'll help, we'll help. Thank you.
Could I have one clarification? You mentioned an acronym, UMA.
That's UMA Business Machining out in, out in the development.
Okay. Thank you.
Industrial development.
Just for viewers that may not know what exactly what that is.
There are two businesses we helped put out there, not a taxpayer burden.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, there's two, two items we utilize a lot when we're looking at new development and new growth opportunities, one is tax increment financing, others tax abatement. In the last three years, we're trying to get another option and another tool for us. We've allocated $50,000 a year out of our budget to an economic, economic development authority, the EDA Fund. So we're utilizing another tool in our, in our pocket to try to incentivize job growth and so forth. In the past, we've incentivized through TIF financing a property that had been vacant for years. A developer came to us, we realized it was a good decision and they put, utilized TIF financing for that to help the downtown area flourish. The second TIF financing that we've been involved with recently, that's outside of job growth, has been senior living, which is, has memory care, assisted living, and so forth. And that area was so desperately needed in this community that we've been trying for 20 years to get it and we needed that push to get that growth in that area in it. Generally, I'm in favor of TIF or abatement depending on how it lays out on job growth, job opportunities to try to change Zimmerman from a bedroom community into a growing, more equally balanced community.
Thank you. Could you repeat the question one more time, please?
Yep.
Taxpayer-supported incentives are a popular method used by municipalities to attract new development. What type of projects should be incentivized with local tax dollars in the city of Zimmerman?
I was kind of going on that too. I think manufacturing and bringing more industries out to Zimmerman should be used for that, tax incentives. Instead of seeing Zimmerman be a drive-by city or, I mean, majority of our citizens here in Zimmerman commute to work. We're, we're growing fast and we got a lot of these apartments going up. It'd be nice to give our people here in our community a place to work and stay and live right here. That way, our taxpayers' money is coming right back into our city here instead of going elsewhere. That's what I would like to see. You know, we're with the, or the highway construction possibly happening as well. It might be easier access on and off the highway system here, might incentivize more companies as well to put their businesses up here and go forth with that. That's all I've got.
All right. Thank you, Travis. All right. So moving down the line, Larry, you are our third question. So this is pertaining to housing. We kind of got into it a little bit there, but this is a more direct question. We hear from businesses throughout the region that they are struggling to find enough employees so they can grow. How can Zimmerman adapt its housing policies to help attract the necessary workforce?
Well, I think we have the land, we have the developers in the area to do that, but I think one of the complaints I've heard, and I heard it back when I was on the council on Elk River, is sometimes the whack and sack, that's water hookup fee, sewer hookup fees are, are too high. And I know in the past, we've worked with developers on giving them a break, so to speak, so that we can get more housing or not raising them so much because we need, obviously you need money for sewer and water towers, et cetera, but at some point, there is a point where it's too much. And I think a good way to do that is have developers work with the city staff and the council and see what, what would be available. And if there's any sort of extra housing, as the mayor pointed out, you know, you can use TIF financing and tax abatement to get other sorts of things like that into town. But otherwise, I think it's pretty much, it's got to be pretty much business as usual. We need to attract people in town and we need, we need to show that as a city that we're trying to expand our economic development and us down bringing in industry and commercial and other development. You bring that in, more people are going to want to develop their land and put in more housing. So it's, it's got to be a multifaceted approach and I, that's, that's what I'd like to bring to the table.
Okay. Thank you.
Question again.
I'm putting my glasses on to get right to it. We hear from businesses throughout the region that they are struggling to find enough employees so they can grow. How can Zimmerman adapt its housing policies to help attract the necessary workforce?
Okay. Workforce, to me, doesn't relate to sack and whack fees. You need them to pay the bills. Now, we're not going to dump that expense on the taxpayers when we have to make a bond payment. When you're new here, you pay sack and whack, that helps make the bond payments, so it keeps everything functioning, okay? To get the labor force, as I understand it, there's a lot going on in basements watching TV and playing video games. So I think you've got to get an incentive to get them out of the basement, A, and your business says, as a lot of them are paying them, to go to school. You go to school, you come to work for us. After school, you get paid to work. We pay your, your education. When you get done, you owe us X number of hours to help repay the schooling. You've got to get the people. They're here. We've got 6,000 residents and there's a workforce here. It's to get them motivated to work. If you, government hands them out more to stay home than they do to work, common sense says that ain't going to work if you go out of business. So a lot of businesses aren't opening because they don't have the help. And either let's get the help by getting them motivated, get them off the couch or whatever's not motivating them, not subsidizing their paychecks with, with free money. Thank you.
Okay.
I think the point of the question is how to take a look at your housing situation and how that can relate, relate to the workforce. Is that correct?
That is correct.
So I was involved with and went to a Sherwin County Commissioners Meeting that showed rental and housing studies. And it was a very informative report that showed that Zimmerman was lacking a lot of rental properties. They were lacking some seniors. They're actually lacking some slab-on-grade type senior facility homes, not necessarily in independent living, but in, in independent living without any management facilities. The, right now, we have taken steps in the community to make corrections and look to that study for guidance on housing. One of the residential developers in the area is just looking to finish up a development in the Tall Pines neighborhood. I believe the number is 76 homes, it's 72, it's somewhere around there that will add additional people, you know, to help generate people for the workforce. Some of the multi-housing that's going up in the area also would increase the, the population for the workforce, but some of the state guidelines also show that the rental, the rental price for them units is actually a reduced rent based on their income. So we're also renting out people, to people in those, or rental units at a reduced rate from state guidelines to help them start out and get on their feet in the workforce.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Travis, I will repeat the question. We hear from businesses throughout the region that they are struggling to find enough employees so they can grow. How can Zimmerman adapt its housing policies to help attract the necessary workforce?
It kind of goes back in that last question I answered too. Zimmerman is growing. We've got, like you said, multiple rental units going up in the city and incentivizing manufacturing and industries that come to Zimmerman and to provide more of a workforce so we can provide enough work opportunity in our community for our residents that are currently looking to move up here or that are already here, giving them a chance to, you know, work here instead of commuting or just making more incentive for people to, you know, come out and build here instead of elsewhere. That's all I got.
Thank you. All right. Harley?
I will repeat the question. We hear from businesses throughout the region that they are struggling to find enough employees so they can grow. How can Zimmerman adapt its housing policies to help attract the necessary workforce?
I think the City of Zimmerman has done a super job as far as increasing the housing availability in the city of Zimmerman with a variety. That variety is expanding as developers are growing in, in the area. I think there's another avenue to take a look at and that is with businesses, I think even a special committee set up between the city and the businesses in the area to work together to create incentives, as was mentioned at the table here. Incentives education-wise, incentives vocational-wise. Create, help create a bigger workforce right here locally. We know that a lot of people here transport to the city. We need to find a way with the businesses to keep people here locally and hopefully create jobs that people will be interested in.
Great. Thank you. All right. So we are to our fourth question. And Dave, you will be first up on this question. So this pertains to the landfill. With the closure of the Great River Energy Resource Recovery Facility in January of 2019, the Elk River landfill is filling up faster than originally planned. At last spring's Economic Development Forum, the county administrator, Bruce Meslet, spoke of concerns about the capacity of the current landfill site, the environmental contamination issue, a lack of cleanup plan, and the need for landfill expansion. What ideas do you bring to the council to address these concerns?
I would think one would, would, a possibility would be, is a alternative method than going to the landfill. They had it in Elk River. I don't know exactly for sure why it failed, but you have, you're just going to keep dumping it in the ground. So if that's the only outlet you've got, then you're going to need more dirt, you're going to have to protect the environment with it and you're going to have to protect the water, the water base and the soil. So we're growing, so that is a direction that is out there to take.
All right. Did you have anything else or are you good?
I'm good.
All right.
Currently, the landfill waste management has entered into an agreement with the township to change the use of the northernmost cell from a construction- to change the use of the northernmost cell from a construction landfill to a hazardous material landfill, which is household material that would normally have been burnt in the garbage incinerator down in Elk River. With that agreement being stated, we've taken a deep dive into looking at how they're gonna get their permits, where the permits are coming from, how long the process is. We do know that it is a multi-year process with the state. We know that it also gets reviewed by the county. They have people dedicated at both ends to review this specific landfill in the county. If there was an annexation that took place, or merger that took place between Zimmerman and Livonia Township, Zimmerman would also have somebody that brought, would be brought in as environmental specialist that would monitor the landfill, just like Elk River would. We would be looking for Elk River's guidance and partnership with the county and the MPCA to continue to monitor and make sure that landfill is safe.
All right, thank you. Travis?
Question, please.
Absolutely. This is a longer one, so. With the closure of the Great River Energy Resource Recovery Facility in January of 2019, the Elk River landfill is filling up faster than originally planned. At last spring's Economic Development Forum, county administrator Bruce Meslett spoke of the concerns about the capacity of the current landfill site, the environmental contamination issue, a lack of cleanup plan, and the need for landfill expansion. What ideas do you bring to the council to address these concerns?
The ideas that I would like to bring to the council with the concerns of that would be, like Nick stated, with bringing on an environmental specialist as well, and I'm sure they're already in the works of running through everything, that potential hazards and doing all their investigations that they need to do. But yeah, if this is something that's probably going to happen, we need to be very knowledgeable about it and bring on our own environmental specialist and our team, too, to kinda monitor that situation, too, to make sure, you know, we're not contaminating and, you know, having it become an issue instead of, you know, making it better than what it is. That's all I've got.
All right, thank you. Harley, I'll repeat the question. With the closure of the Great River Energy Resource Recovery Facility in January of 2019, the Elk River landfill is filling up faster than originally planned. At last spring's Economic Development Forum, county administrator Bruce Meslett spoke of the concerns about the capacity of the current landfill site, the environmental contamination issue, a lack of cleanup plan, and the need for landfill expansion. What ideas do you bring to the council to address these concerns?
I guess I would start out with the word caution. We have heard several stories of the Elk River landfill and its progression. Last week, there was a presentation to the Elk River Council and the county, or from the county and from waste management. It sounded good until they started talking about the beginning of the landfill where there was not the proper authority to make them do specific things to seal it. That portion of it is still seeping into the groundwater. We've got a precious area up here, and I think we're at caution. We've gotta make sure, granted, I agree, it's probably going to come, but if it does come, let's make sure that we don't get stuck down the road with a hazardous waste site down there that's gonna need cleanup. Make sure that the liability to the city is very, very minimal. Put it back on the state, put it back on the county, put primarily back on waste management. I think it's very, very important that we proceed with caution and go slowly. I agree, the steps that are already taken by this council is the right path. Just making sure that the city of Zimmerman is protected in the future.
All right, thank you. All right, Larry, I will repeat the question. With the closure of the Great River Energy Resource Recovery Facility in January of 2019, the Elk River landfill is filling up faster than originally planned. At last spring's Economic Development Forum, county administrator Bruce Meslett spoke of the concerns about the capacity of the current landfill site, the environmental contamination issue, a lack of cleanup, and the need for landfill expansion. What ideas do you bring to the council to address these concerns?
I like Mr. Wells, but we need to proceed with caution, but I think, I was on the Elk River City Council and I worked with the landfill. And they did a very good job. Unfortunately, what's come up is there is pollution from, I believe, the late 70s, or in the 70s, where they didn't have liners in there. And it was mid 80s, I believe, they started putting liners to protect the groundwater and soil. So from that time forward, it's been done pretty well. Unfortunately, we were getting pollution from the original. And I think if we, or Livonia Township, or if we merge, we need to proceed cautiously, but I think we need to maybe come up with some understandings that we would not be liable for that. I don't think Zimmerman wants to be on the hook for past lack of understanding, misdeeds, whatever it was. But I think it's probably inevitable, but I think if we work with our county partners, possibly Elk River and the state and the different permittings, that we go forward. And I'm not saying it's a bad thing or a good thing, but I'd have to take some public input as well. I think everybody needs to have a say in something this important. Thank you.
All right. All right, so we are on to the fifth and final question, and this is about County Road Four and 169. And the question reads, are you familiar with the plans for County Road Four and 169 improvements, and how will this major infrastructure impact the city of Zimmerman?
Well, I serve on MINDOT Committee for Region 7W, so we've extensively looked at the whole County Road Four process from '45 to '46. We did receive, as stated earlier, we received some federal money for a trail system that would push pedestrians off of it. That pushed the county into a process to go into a reconstruction of County Road Four. We have all heard the stories about pedestrians being hit on County Road Four after dark walking along the side of the road. There are safety improvements needed, there are safety improvements coming. With 169 and Four, that has been one of my major goals since I've taken office. In fact, it was the very first meeting I called for with Kurt Dought. We have been out lobbying to Washington DC for safety improvements at that intersection. We do have a federal grant available, and Tom Emmer did earmark $7 million for that interchange already. We continue to work with the county on designs and input from the city to meet our needs as well as the counties.
All right, thank you. All right, Travis, are you familiar with the plans for County Road Four and 169 improvements, and how will this major infrastructure impact the city of Zimmerman?
Yeah, pretty familiar with the plans with this. It's been in the talks for years and years, as long as I could remember. It's something that's, I believe, is very crucial, and we need this. With the construction going on in Elk River, too, it's gonna create hazards at our intersection if this doesn't get done, when all the bypasses are in through Elk River. I think it's gonna help our community, help the flow and keep the accident reductions, reduce accidents significantly here. But then Zimmerman, I think we also need to do, you know, make Zimmerman not a pass-by city anymore, too, and maybe entice more people to pull off here, catch that weekend traffic going up north by incentivizing more people to pull off, and maybe more businesses along that highway corridor. That's all, yeah.
Great, thank you. All right, Harley, are you familiar with the plans for County Road Four and 169 improvements, and how will this major infrastructure impact the city of Zimmerman?
Yes, I am. And I, this is something that really has to be done on 169 and Four. Because as stated previously, with what's being done in Anoka, what's being done in Elk River, it is going to be a straight-through freeway. The only one problem is, is that our neighbors to the north saw what happened when 169 was moved around the city. It became basically a local destination for local residents only. I don't believe, unless we grow immensely, that we can maintain the growth we want if this becomes a total bypass. We gotta make sure in the designs, and I see that it's already, a lot of it is being done, we gotta make sure that the accesses are very easily to maneuver. We also need to make sure that we get the state signage and very possibly additional, and I don't really like a lot of highway signage, but I think we need to support our businesses with the proper signage. Because otherwise, these people, once they leave the Twin Cities, and they don't have to stop, they're not gonna stop for anything, because they're gonna go all the way to the casino up by Malax. So we've gotta find, we've gotta find ways to get those people to come off the highway and facilitate our businesses and our restaurants.
Great, thank you. All right, Larry, are you familiar with the plans for the County Road Four and 169 improvements, and how will this major infrastructure impact the city of Zimmerman?
I'm familiar with them, and I think, first of all, one of the best things from this is, this is one of the most deadly intersections in the state. So by having this, you're gonna make it much safer. I think one of the biggest things, and we found this when I was on the council in Elk River, we put semaphores on 169, you're bringing the city together, you're connecting the east and the west side of 169, and I think we almost have like two separate communities. And it would be nice, you know, with this interchange, it will bring the city together, and it will also, I think, open up more land and more business opportunities. And I do agree with what you said, we have to figure out ways, once you do get a bypass in there, how to get people off the highway. You wanna become a destination city, and other than that, I just think it's a great project, and I think it's gonna provide much-needed safety. I mean, I'm just amazed that it's taken this long, and I'll be happy to see it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Dave?
Question.
I will read it for you.
I wanna see if you've memorized it or not yet.
No, not quite yet. Are you familiar with the plans for County Road Four and 169 improvements, and how will this major infrastructure impact the city of Zimmerman?
Well, one, we know if they don't do something, they can come from Milwaukee or Chicago nonstop, and they'll sit here in beautiful downtown Zimmerman, being backed up all the way to Anoka, so we gotta get something done. The highway itself is gonna be majorly controlled by the state, working with the city and the county. The goods and the bads, the goods will be fast-flow, some will think that's good, the bads, they'll go around us. We have in this area, been waiting for this to develop for 50 years that I know of, so it's gonna have its goods and its bads, it has to have something get done. I think just as important as that is, I think County Road Four, going east and west, and the issues we have to the west of County, of 169, is important, and we have more opportunity to get involved and put our input in that between us and the county.
All right. Thank you. In the past, have we gone for the two-minute wrap-up or question?
Question.
Okay, thank you. So we have one question here, and we went through, so the five, we'll start with Travis on this one. This question states, is it in the best interest for Livonia and Zimmerman, or is it, I'm sorry, is it in the best interest for Livonia and Zimmerman to annex?
I believe it is in the best interest for Livonia and Zimmerman to annex. I mean, we're already, I feel we're already a big community here as well. It's, you know, we've got, our youth sports and everything, it's all Zimmerman/Livonia, it doesn't matter where you're from, Zimmerman or Livonia here. With annexing this, it's just gonna help the city grow even more, it'll help our funding for city projects possibly to happen in a more timely manner than, you know, just having the city of Zimmerman be the one to be on the hook for some of the stuff. I think, and growing that, too, and getting other people involved from Livonia, growing our council, you know, we're getting other people's input as well. I think that'll be, it'll be very beneficial for the city and Livonia to merge. That's all I've got.
Great, thank you. All right, I'll read the question, hopefully better this time. Is it in the best interest for Livonia and Zimmerman to annex?
I guess, I guess the major question is, when you are talking annex, are you talking about the three square miles roughly of Zimmerman, growing in a mass annexation to 15 square Again, and I know it sounds like I continually rely on caution, but I'm fearful if, you know, I don't know if the annexation is talking about a mass complete annexation or bisections coming in as they grow. The gradual would be, to me, a better way to go, if you're looking at 50 acres to the north or the annexation to the south. Again, you're talking about a parcel. And I think that's, if you're gonna go, that's probably the best way to go. I don't think, without a complete background study of costs, city finances, Livonia finances, for the city of Zimmerman to take on a full-fledged 15-square-mile, I mean, your costs, your public works, everything is gonna grow so fast, and you gotta make sure that you've got the funds, and what you're bringing in is gonna help pay for that, because you can bury yourself real quick.
Great, thank you. Larry, is it in the best interest for Livonia and Zimmerman to annex?
I'm gonna answer this two different ways. Personally, I don't think it would be bad. I started to work for the city of Elk River in 1980, just after Elk River annexed with the Elk River Township, and there were a lot of fears from people, and none of them came to fruition. It wasn't that terrible or bad. But again, I, if I am elected...
It wasn't that terrible or bad, but again, I, I, if I am elected, that's, this, my, that decision is not because of my, is not made with my personal opinion. I have to see the financials for the city of LaVonia, or township of LaVonia, city of Zimmerman. I have to, I have to take in input from the public. It's got to be a full package before a decision is made, because it's not fair. I mean, that's why we're elected, we're supposed to be independent, and I, that's the approach I would take, whether I like it or not, and I told you, I don't see a problem with it, but if the, if financially and everything else, it doesn't make sense, and public input is such that it doesn't make sense, then, you know, or vice versa, then I would make the decision that way.
All right. Dave, I will repeat the question. Is it in the best interest for LaVonia and Zimmerman to annex?
Well, I got faith in the city, and I got faith in the township, and I got faith in the, faith in our legal counsel, get it done.
Okay. All right.
Oh, done.
We're good. Thank you. All right, Nick?
You know, I, I've spoken to a lot of township residents about this very thing, and the very first thing I ask them is, do you tell people you're from LaVonia Township, or do you tell them you're from Zimmerman? And I've never heard anybody say, I tell everybody I know that I'm from LaVonia Township. If they ask specifically, what, what part of the area are you from, then it's LaVonia Township, but when you're speaking about, to somebody on a greater scale, where you live, they say Zimmerman. I think that our schools unite us in the fact that we are Zimmerman, whether you're from the township, whether you're not. I understand that there's a lot of fears out there on different things from taxes to hunting, to roads. The annexation merger, it would be great if it happened. The, if it doesn't happen, it's because everybody's gone through the paperwork and realizes that it is best to separate. Currently, the city's exploring, taking a look at outside consulting firms to go through that, to go through the financials of the city as well as the township, and make sure all that can come together, and nobody's put out at all, because the last thing we want to do is create hard feelings from both the city or the township.
Great, thank you. So we will, we're approaching the end of our, our hour, so we will go through, and we'll go with the two-minute summary. So in the two-minute summary, you can talk about any topic that we didn't talk about, or you can clarify a point that you weren't able to in your answering of the previous five questions. So Travis did the first one, so we'll start with Harley in, in the two-minute summary, please.
Thank you. Again, I want to thank the Elk River Area Chamber for putting this on. I guess I go back, my, my main priorities, public safety, County Road Four and One Sixty-Nine, and the, the annexation of LaVonia Township and Zimmerman. Those are probably my four strongest priorities to get it done, get it done right, and make sure that the township, the residents are protected. One other thing, I, I do bring a lot of experience to this position. I was, I served in Spring Lake Park, I served four years on planning and zoning, five years on the council, seventeen years as mayor. From there, I went, we moved to Blaine, and I served six years on the Spring Lake Park Blaine, Monmouth Fire Department Board, served, served as president the last two years. I guess, just overall, I, my family, my wife and I moved to Zimmerman. We were very surprised, very pleased with the area and from hence where we moved from. So I just think this is a great place, and we need to move forward and make it a greater place for, for the residents, for the youth, and for the seniors in the area.
Great, thank you. Larry?
Having enough of life, I guess I'd like to expand upon the fact, my whole, my whole career has been public service. I was a police officer for twenty-nine years, served on the city council at Elk River for twelve, and the Sherburne County Board for four years, and I've been on twenty-plus committees. And I guess the philosophy I, I work by is, I, it's not about me, it's about the information that's presented to me, and it's about the input from the staff, the, from various agencies and the public. And I, I think that's incredibly important today, and I also like to reiterate my, my top priorities in public safety, particularly today, our world, our, our country is in turmoil, and I think we need to continually work with our, our Sheriff's Department in finding better ways to keep the people safe, and so that they feel safe. And I think the Neighborhood Watch, I mean, we've got a citywide thing which I've attended, it's nice, but when I was on the police department in Fridley, we had neighborhoods, we actually had blocks, and everybody got to know each other, and I've found even a neighbor that I work on, so many people are working odd hours, no one knows their neighbors, and we really need to, to, I think, step that up, Neighborhood Watch as part of the public safety concern would be one of those. And I, again, One Sixty-Nine County Road Four corridor is very important, and we need to be vigilant on keeping the pressure on, the powers to be, to get the thing done, otherwise the, things can slip by, so, thank you.
Great, thank you. Dave?
Well, I'm, I've been mayor here for twenty-two years, and I enjoy what these guys are saying, because we must have been, done something right, they moved here, and they like it. So the idea, our, our priorities were prosperous, safe quality of living when you're elected to a governmental position as council and mayor. Your number-one priority is the safe, of, safety of life and limb, and that's always been our priority, and of which they've agreed upon, that we have a good Sheriff's Department taking care of us, our fire department is second to none, of which I was a member for thirteen years, and we run a no-waste budget. So we're trying to give you the best of both worlds, a good community, you see kids playing and riding their bicycles down the sidewalks, ladies walking their dogs and their kids in their baby carts and stuff, so that's a good comfort feeling when you're on the council, and you've been mayor for twenty-two years, that we're able to have a safe community. So you guys are all here, because we must have been doing something right, so, thank you.
I just want to wrap up by thanking Elk River Area Chamber, and thanking the city staff mainly for basically putting up with me, but I appreciate their common-sense approach and their forward-thinking ideas. A lot of what we talked about tonight was already set in motion. So again, forward-thinking has been a great tool for the city, because they've been, we have some great idea-makers and planners in the city, on the city staff, and I look forward to coming and talking with them, talking with them about ideas on how we can improve it. And I just want to say thank you again to the chamber and the city staff, so.
Great, thank you. Travis, summary?
Yeah, I just want to thank everybody else, everybody for coming out and attending this. I've been on the park board since 2014 for Zip, City of Zimmerman, and we've been, you know, kind of, I guess what we're supposed to just do is on advisory board, just see what our parks are like and address some situations that come up. Like I said earlier, I want to see more growth for our youth here, I want Zimmerman to have our facility, our youth sports facilities as well, more of that. Being a parent that goes, travels all over central Minnesota, the state here, you know, we are very far behind on some of our, our ballfields, our outdoor activities for our youth. I want to, you know, on the park board, we've come up with so many ideas that have just get kind of thrown aside because of either lack of funding, or, you know, we'll wait next time, or whatever it is. I want to see this stuff start to grow and start to happen. I know it's, you know, it's probably been a talk of a lot of people that have come through here, but when we've got other communities coming up to our sporting events as well, it's, you know, we want Zimmerman to be, look at us, you know, we have, take pride in our community, instead of just, you know, this is what we've got, here you go, and see you guys next time. So I want to really push for our involvement with our youth out here and address that situation, because if we have our youth here, they're going to want to come back here and raise their families here as well. That's all I've got.
Great, all right, thank you. I think we are just about at time, I kept you a minute longer than we had planned, but we appreciate your participation, your good, honest answers, and thank you, and good luck to all of you.
Job well done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Job well done.
Thanks, guys.
So I have a question, so my question that I wrote up isn't going to be presented to the people.
The questions tonight are asked by the moderator, and the question, you can ask them individually, but it's not being recorded.